Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then getting into roll call, Commissioner Boyle, as we mentioned, maybe tardy. Commissioner Olar?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Swett?
Here.
Commissioner Zaro?
Here.
Vice Chair Whelan called in. And Chair Elliott, present. And Commissioner Boyle, present.
Here.
Alrighty. One, two, three, four, five. Alright, with that, we'll get into any additions, deletions, or corrections to tonight's agenda. I've got just one, which is that item 7C should be number eight, and then from there down they...
Say that again?
Just that item 7C is actually its own... Oh, no, that's right, that's right. For some reason, I had it in my mind that that should be an eight, but it's not.
Okay.
Nope. Ignore that.
Ignored.
Yeah. I motioned to ignore my last comment. Alright, so with that, we'll get into public participation. We don't have anyone in the crowd. Hopefully, we'll get at least eight viewers, I think is about what we average. Yeah.
Wow.
Not live, but it's probably just me replaying the minutes eight times. But they count. So with that, we'll move into approval of minutes from February 12. And in our packets, I didn't check to see if our printed was the... Corrected? No, okay. So there was just some minor corrections as far as roll call goes.
I emailed out a revised minutes. Hopefully, everyone got that. There was just some minor corrections.
I didn't get it by email, because I just picked up one, and I didn't know it was my email.
You didn't know it was my email.
But that's okay.
It is corrected here, though.
So it's revised. I'll just pull it off.
Yeah, so that everyone's aware, the revised minutes that came out just adjusted roll call so that present was Chair Elliott, Vice Chair Whelan, Commissioners Boyle and Zaro, as well as Planning Manager Stahlnecker. So it just deleted like that Dustin wasn't here. And then what else? Trying to remember if there was any other comments.
I think that was the main...
That was it.
I double-checked the roll call, and that, yeah, I had Dustin, I'd pulled an old one.
Okay. So, and those were emailed out prior to the meeting, so...
Move to approve the amended minutes.
Second.
Alright, perfect. We have a motion to approve the amended minutes. That's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes, you names. I forget which, Tom and Susan.
Susan was second.
Okay. I was like, I forget who was first and who was second, but it was...
What did I do? I was writing. I said yes.
Yeah.
And I should have said the February 12 minutes, but yeah.
You're good. We're close enough. Alright. With that, we'll get into our public hearing, Agenda Item 6A regarding co-living. Let me get to that page.
Alright, so this is the first, so this is the first public hearing. I'll give a brief overview, and then you want to open it at that point? Okay. Oh, we didn't do public hearing sign-ins. Well, if anyone speaks, we will just take their information. So basically, this is a requirement that all cities allow what's called co-living buildings. We went over this at the last meeting. So basically, a co-living is the idea of one building where instead of renting a full apartment or suite, you're actually just renting a room, and then there would be a common shared of kitchen, bathroom, laundry, that kind of stuff. And so it's to be required in any multifamily zone or any zone that allows multifamily. So for us, that is the town center mixed use, the uptown mixed use, the uptown, or no, sorry, the urban residential multifamily, and the neighborhood commercial in certain circumstances. So basically, the draft code is simply to add a definition to define what co-living dwell, a co-living dwelling unit is, as well as just adding it to the table of uses as permitted in those four zones.
Okay, so with that, so for the public hearing, I'll open it when I do the gavel. If you would like to speak, you would step up to the podium, speak your first and last name and your city of residence. We no longer require your address. And with that, we will take notes of that. It is something where you speak, and we're not allowed to respond to you, but then we will take that into consideration when we go into the agenda topic. So with that said, it is 6:06 PM, and I open this public hearing. Yes, please.
Pointing for which? I apologize, you have to speak in the microphone.
We can't hear, we can't hear. We're all so young here.
Turn on her microphone? Okay.
Some more than others.
So, just a side note, where in our agenda does it say we're having a public hearing?
On the front.
Yeah, it's checked, public hearing, as far as...
Oh, because I read that it said in the minutes from...
I screwed up the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
That was the other corrections that I had fixed.
By the way, I didn't have, it's at home.
Okay.
Well, you have to print it out, detach it.
Alright. Apologize for the disruption. You may start again. Yes, so first and last name?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. My name is Sandy Hassell. I live up in Sterling Heights at the top of the hill in Milton. My concern about this co-living arrangement that is being proposed, and if it is a state mandate or something that we have no say over, then my points are pretty moot at this juncture. But the development that I live in currently has a home that is, got a co-living arrangement. They have multiple cars that block the road. They don't move their cars. They become stagnant. They've reason, have even had weeds growing around some of the tires. And our homeowner association calls it in, and they move it, you know, eventually, maybe. And then they go right back to parking again and using the spots that the people that are paying our taxes are supporting for the roads. The person who owns that particular residence, and it is single-family residential, I believe, doesn't maintain the yard, and it is a real struggle to get them to keep up with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Now, I understand that there's a new development that's being proposed, Gilbert's Place, I believe, which is across 27th. And that is part of another co-living arrangement proposal. And my fear is that we are going to have so many cars and so many people trying to cram into such small places that it's really going to ruin the aesthetic of our town. Traffic is already pretty crazy on 27th and 28th. And I don't think it's going to encourage the life and the community atmosphere that we have enjoyed, or that I've enjoyed for 28 years here. So that is my concern.
Right. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Can I ask a question, though, before I leave?
You can ask a question. They can't answer at this time, but when we go to our discussion, I will try to answer and address as the planning commission wants.
Try to meander it in. As I said, we try to meander our response in when we're allowed to speak later. But feel free to ask a question, yes. Okay.
Well, yes, it's a good day today.
Alright, it is 6:10, so we will close this public hearing regarding 202025-0001, co-living buildings.
If you wouldn't mind actually writing your name, if you didn't already, on that sheet, sign-in sheet, that way I have the spelling of it, and I can do it correctly. So just the, it doesn't specifically say public hearing, but there's the sign-in. That would really help me when I do the minutes. Do you want me to wait to address any of those and do the other public hearing?
So our agenda was set up that we do our two public hearings. First, I think our second public hearing will be pretty quick, and then we can get right into... Okay. So with that, we're going to get into our second public hearing, which is regarding unit lot subdivisions and binding site plans. The time is 6:11, and I'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Oh, do you want me to intro it?
Oh, yeah. Let me take that back. Do you want to introduce that, and then I'll announce the time?
Yeah. So the second one that we're taking a public hearing on, and again, we will follow up the public hearings with some discussion and possible action, is the, again, this is, part of this is tied to a state mandate. So part when, tied to the middle housing, is that cities need to have the option of allowing what they're calling unit lot subdivisions for things like ADUs. So we'd kind of discussed it previously. There's some examples. The idea that you are kind of condominiumizing the actual house, so you could have a single-family house with two ADUs, and you could allow them to be sold with the idea that they would have joint ownership of the common areas. So we just have to have a process for that, and so the first half of this is using, creating the unit lot subdivision process. It's tight, it's very similar to our short-plat subdivision, as well as using the state kind of example template. With that, as I started looking at that, so unit lot subdivision is only for at the most up to nine units. It can, it's for, again, it's for ADUs, middle housing kind of thing. We also have what's called a binding site plan that's already in our code that has been used for basically bigger things, things that are multifamily, things that are commercial, things that are non-residential. And I felt like since those are very similar in nature, again, the idea that you are making one big site plan, but you're letting individual ownerships with common area, it seemed like a good time to update that process as well, since they're very similar. So the second one isn't a mandate, but it seemed like it was very logical to do them both at the same time. So that's the draft that is here today.
Perfect. Alright, so with that, we will have our public hearing for item PLN 2025-002, unit lot subdivisions and binding site plan. Time is 6:13. If we have any public comment? Alright, and with that, we will close it at 6:13. Alright, so now getting to Agenda Item 7A, which is now our group discussion on co-living. Going back to page five of our packets.
Okay, so just to kind of rehash and expand a little bit, is that it is a state mandate to allow co-living housing options in multifamily zones. So it would not, it does not apply to our single-family zones, which are now neighborhood residential one and neighborhood residential two. But it... And so that's the one part. There is what's called adult family homes that are licensed from the state as a separate thing. So if it's adult family home, that is supposed to be an assistance, care-for-city kind of thing, then those are licensed from the state, and those are allowed anywhere in the city. But the specific co-living, which is sort of, which we had talked about, which is, you know, kind of like that boarding house, lodging house, kind of historic things that have been allowed in cities, would, that is what this specifically, so there's no... There's no specific medical or care tied to it. It's simply that you would, it's providing different options for people who can, who maybe can't afford a full apartment, but they can afford a room. And so, but again, it's not going to be in the single-family residential areas. And then, real quick, Gilbert's was mentioned. Gilbert's is actually an apartment complex, so it is not a co-living project.
Yeah. And then with those, we'd be looking at traffic studies and all of that, that we normally would with any multifamily home or commercial development.
So it would be allowed, but yes, if it gets approved, I mean, we have to require it, but yes, if one came in and they were wanting to build something or convert something, they would still have to go through all of the normal procedures. When we go through the parking requirements, we will, there's a state limit, which that, we don't have to do until closer to the end of the year, so right now, we would probably compare it. We would use our existing for different apartments and stuff for parking. So there would be a parking requirement for this. There would be landscaping requirements, light, fencing, anything similar to what you would for an apartment complex or something. It would just be the idea that instead of, like I said, instead of full kitchens, full bathrooms in each unit, they're just shared of those.
Okay, great.
But it would still go through the normal process.
Perfect. We'll open up for discussion. Commissioner Johnson?
Co-living. You know, it's interesting. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
I find it interesting, because I think there's single-family homes in our city that are already doing this, and I know of a couple already that somebody owns the property, lives there, and they rent out their rooms to other people. So, and I want to backtrack for a minute. I wish we could get out of the urban growth area, but we can't, and we have to abide by the state rules and the state legislature, who needs some training on what it's like for a city to survive and keep its personality. I think some of this stuff breaks the social fabric of neighborhoods down in our city. I understand the need for co-living. The question I have is how do we, if we allow it here, then we are allowing it also in residential, because they are happening. I don't know how we stop that definition, because there are people that are renting out their rooms. We had one on 11th for a while, and I think that one's not there anymore. I know a couple on, I mean, on Laurel, and I know there's some around. And some people rent their rooms out because of income. They don't have enough money with the interest and their loan payments on a house, so they will rent out their rooms. That's co-living. They're not family members, and they're not, you know, they're just people renting a room. The other question I have on co-living is, is there a time period? What would make it, could a person who builds a co-living dwelling make it a short-term rental instead? And say, oh, I'm allowed as a co-living. These people only want to stay here maybe 15 days instead of a permanent. Is there a timeframe, so we don't get caught with short-term rentals and co-living spaces? If the purpose is to provide housing for people who can't afford an apartment. I, it's not that I'm against it in that way, but I think there's things we have to protect. And again, we, as one of our, our person who came tonight, it is happening in the residential areas, and we're just saying it's in these four, and so there is a discrepancy there. Also, I don't understand, may not treat a sleeping unit as more than one-fourth of a dwelling unit. So does that mean there are four bedrooms? What does it mean by one-fourth of a dwelling unit? Because one-fourth means there's three.
For density purposes. So if, if the density was 12 units per acre, it would be theoretically 48 co-living units per acre, so the equivalent of four bedrooms.
Okay. So if they're to build these, it would not look like a residential home. We're looking at something that would be structured like, because we see the adult family homes are looking in their residential neighborhoods, a single-family home. These aren't to look like that. They're going to be more like a little apartment-type, you know, with a board, what you think of an old boarding house or a rooming house. And we will have design specifics ahead for them, so we don't get a mismatch. I mean, part of me wants to say, if we allow these, maybe we should start looking for a pattern of design, and this is what we accept as design. So it's designated as a co-living place in these areas, and it's not for short-term rentals. I mean, I really, you just don't know, because what happens is hedge funds are buying up property and building things. And so what if they say, oh, we want to, we're gonna, like BlackRock, let's build a co-living place, you know? And they write it off on taxes and stuff like that. I just want to protect some stuff. And would we just get property tax from a co-living place? Because it's a business if they're letting people live there.
The only thing you don't get property tax for is government and certain nonprofits.
Okay, so, but it's a business. If it's run by somebody other than a person living there, it would be a business.
So it would, it would be just, we would treat it the same as we would any apartment complex.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I mean, we don't currently require apartment complexes to have special design, and, you know, we let them sort of decide. So it would be treated the same as that.
But why couldn't we? Why couldn't a city set up a sign, a, a, a design category and say, this is how we want our city to be viewed? We want to control how things look, so there's consistency in the city. I mean, is that wrong to want to say? Because a lot of apartments sort of look alike, you know? Is it, would it be casting, saying, oh, that's what you are? I'm not talking about that. It's like, when you look in some small cities, there's a pattern for development. It just adds a beauty, I think.
Yeah, we can look at design standards for zone or...
Talking about design standards later in the year, so those are things that we can talk about. Do we want design standards for those kind of, for multifamily? There are certain cities that do have general design standards. Or do we, I mean, and technically, if you look at our uptown design standards, those cover those kind of things, so...
Yeah, why don't we, so if I can, I'll kind of reiterate some of the stuff from last meeting. So co-living, I don't know if you guys watched Saved by the Bell, the new class, but it's almost how, like, where my, my son's going to be going into a co-living lease next year in Pullman. And what it is, is you've got anyone ranging from two to five bedrooms, sharing an apartment, but then each bedroom within that apartment has its own locking door. And they have their own individual leases, so that they have a shared space, but if one of those kids bail, the other roommates aren't liable for trying to make up the difference. And then there's some agreements on what, how that apartment complex can then re-lease out that bedroom that got vacated. So that, and then I know in U-Dub, I've been working on a property where it's 250s, 200 to 250 square foot micro units, where they, each, each unit has basically a kitchenette that is a mini fridge, and a hot plate, and a microwave, your bedroom, and a bathroom, and, and a shower. So I don't even know if that really counts as co-living, but they're, and then shared, like, big TV spaces and stuff like that. So it's just another way of finding affordable housing that's not driving people into what you're talking about, which are, I'm going to sublet out bedrooms of my house, and that's really more of a roommate situation. We don't really have anything we can, as far as I know, to prevent people from having roommates. But this is a way of being able to set standards like you're talking about, as far as, now, we're limited to, we can only do so much if it's within a major transit stop, and that was one of our discussions last time, was if we can get a better definition of what a major transit stop is. Does that mean a train station or a transit center, or does that mean every individual bus stop?
Well, I, I find it interesting in that they say you can't require standards more restrictive than other multifamily buildings in the same zone. And I'm wondering why the state require, are saying that. What are they afraid of? That a city would try to put standards above a multifamily building?
I think that you can't intentionally make it so prohibitive that developers won't do it to say that I'm technically meeting...
Right, I understand, but why, why do they feel that fear? What would a city, would a city purposely try to do that?
Yeah, they have historically tried to make things more difficult. And part of it is because it's something new, it's something different. People aren't comfortable with something that they're not used to, that they don't have examples of. So the idea is to treat it simply as the same as multifamily. And so again, if, at this point, this is, it's allowed elsewhere. If there are group homes in resident, single-family residential, there are some that are allowed, there's, and there are some that are not. So it would just be, if that becomes an issue, is determining, is it one that's a legal one, or if it's not a legal one.
And so is there also a distance, like, you can only, so it means you couldn't put a standard saying you can only have a co-living dwelling within so many feet of each other? Like, what if on, there's an area and they want to put five in? That would be allowed in these areas?
Same as you would allow five apartments.
Okay. I'll wait till later, let everybody else have a chance. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Boyle?
Okay, a few things. I have a couple questions, and then some statements. First of all, I view this as another, just to get this out there, once I, once, I, I can't say how much I appreciate people coming in for the public hearings. Thank you for that. We all think along the same lines. This is, to me, and maybe others view this too, is just another big-city house bill that's being imposed on smaller cities. And so we are required to deal with this. And in doing so, trying to protect our community. So I understand your grief and frustration. Couple things, there is nothing in here that mentions who is responsible for complying with code enforcement as far as if this house that is going to have co-living is already rented. The homeowner does not live on site, and the renter is renting out the rooms. I'm concerned about who is going to be responsible for the code enforcement and what, if there was some teeth in the code for the city to take action to solve the problems. You know, obviously, there's going to be some frustrations. Specifically, I'd like to go over the parking situation in more ways than one. I didn't do the survey, so I didn't get my two cents in, but I think I am open to any discussion about on-street parking and, and the impacts to the rest of the community when we get into this co-living. And my other question is, and it could be a dumb question, but what's the difference between this, design standards and form codes?
So, real quick, just a reminder, think of co-living as simply apartment complexes that instead of a studio, it just doesn't have the bathroom, and they're sharing bathrooms, and they're sharing kitchens, because they're going to build, the idea is that you're, these aren't necessarily, at least they're coming in our commercial mixed-use zones. The, I mean, theoretically, we have houses, so yes, they could convert them, I suppose. But this is more like someone's building an apartment, but instead of building, you know, full apartments with multiple bedrooms, it's one bedroom, and they have common spaces. So the idea that it would be the same as anything else that we enforce, or they would have to come through the process. As to... Now, I'm blanking on what your actual second question was.
Design standards versus...
Thank you. So form-based code, they're, they're similar in nature. In a lot of ways, what form-based code is, is design standards where you don't care what's on the inside. You say, you build a building. It has, it has to have this sort of appearance. It can be this many, the wind, the floors can only be so high.
Close to the road.
Close to the road, you know, depending on whatever it is. You know, you can't have a one's flat wall longer than this. You have to articulate. You have to have certain design things. The first floor has to have a height of at least 15 feet. The upper ones have to have this much. But we don't care what you put inside of it. You could put commercial inside, you could put retail inside, you could put ops inside, you could put apartments inside. Usually, a lot of times, it's used in mixed use for that. And so it's more focused on, if you build what we like, what it looks like, we don't necessarily care what you do on the inside. So design standards are you, are sort of that... In most times when you're saying design standards, it's tied to the fact, like, we have a use table tied to our zoning. So you have to use these, you know, that we're only allowing apartments
Right.
and multifamily in here. Now, we, like I said, our uptown design standards, if you build apartments... And multifamily in here. Now, we, like I said, our uptown design standards, if you build apartments in the uptown area, which some of that property is, so we have our overlay of our uptown, there is requirements on what it looks like. Does it have to have porches? Does it have to have a certain entrance type? So there are design criteria. That's why, like, the newer things that have gone in, um, like, when they did the hops and drops, they had to kind of, it, it was remodeling a building, so it wasn't the full-fledged, but like, that's, they had to do certain things to make it look, to meet those things. They had to have the front outside eating areas, they had to do certain things, certain landscaping to make it the appearance better. Um, that's, like, gravity had to. So, um, form, like I said, form-based code is a, just a different sort of version, um, that again, is setting specifics, that this is how, if this is how you have to build it, um, they're very similar in nature.
And our code doesn't really follow the form code, it's more...
We don't have, what's, like I said, we don't have theoretically a form-based code. We do have design standards for parts of the city. And so like I said, when, um, Gravity Coffee went in, when, um, hops and drops went in, the new mod pizza slash whatever, we were going through, and there's certain requirements for...
Uptown was, Coffee was one of the first ones to have to abide by those.
So we do have, and that's where, again, later this year, that was what part of the survey was, is starting to get a feel and moving that way, is do we want to expand, um, the up, you know, we could just use and refine the uptown for other parts of the city that are mixed-use, that are multifamily, that are commercial. Um, do we, do we want, you know, you can do, are we okay with how houses looks? Do we want to put extra burden on residential houses? So those are those things. I, I know this is, again, this is a different, we're not used to this sort of thinking. Yes, there are places over, there are historically places where people, college students, whatever, would just sort of rent a place together. This is more like dorms, but it's dorms that are privately owned. And, um, I, having, again, I, I currently am trying to help a young man get a place to live, and the, it's extremely expensive. He, it's, by the time we got through everything, it was going to be over $2,000 a month for a studio apartment, which he can't afford. We're looking at a one, basically one of these where I think it's, you know, a house that's trying to rent things. It's going to be $700 a month for him to rent a little place. So the idea behind this is if we can create more variety of things that are, and especially things that are cheaper. So again, I, all of those things I think we're going to be dealing with, this is something we have to do.
Yes, if you want to...
And one more thing is, uh, also, my concern with this is, and I've said this before, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but people that rent are not necessarily vested in the community. And so their impacts to the neighborhoods, I mean, what do they care if they park on the street? What do they care if they store their brother's car on the side of the street? Uh, so really, they have no gains. They're here to live. And I, I do appreciate that we're trying to cram people in and give people affordable housing, but, uh, we're also giving away some of our, you know, the, our resources, impacts of the community that we, these people don't pay into.
But you can see it in all rental housing, same thing.
But I could be getting this wrong, because you said that these are more like dorm rooms and not a residential home that's being converted into a, uh, coed housing.
Correct. So this is building from the ground up and making sure that there are standards for noise reduction between them, fire separation, firewalls.
Designated, it's designated as a co-living structure.
Yeah.
Oh, we could give them special names to make them feel welcomed. No, really.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I know you had your hand raised, and then we'll continue with the round robin to...
I, I just have a quick question. Um, yeah, where exactly is this supposed to be taking place? In what, what zones?
So it's in the multifamily zone.
Okay.
The, um, town center, because it's mixed-use, um, uptown, which is a Long Meridian, because it's mixed-use, and the, um, it potentially could go in the neighborhood commercial zones. We allow some multifamily, but it has to meet certain criteria.
So essentially, Meridian 99, Milton Way, or some of Milton Way, and then maybe some of Queens Way, based off of...
Okay.
Yeah.
The next question is, why are we dealing with this?
Because it's a state requirement. But again, it is, the goal is to increase the diversity and affordability in housing.
I understand that. It's, it's just that, uh, people are going to do what they're going to do anyway. Uh, you know, we, we hear from other people that it's already in place in some places.
But where it's, where it's happening is in, is in residential's where people are probably chopping up houses. If you say, hey, you can actually build something that, that does this, that we're not going to require you to have bathrooms and kitchens in every single room, that makes it cheaper to build. There's a chance that someone would build it, and then instead of having illegal ones everywhere, we would have a lot more actual, like, legalized ones. Is that plan and the hope?
Okay. Okay, I'll let it go for the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Zaro.
Okay, um, first of all, I think, uh, looking down on people that rent is out of date. It's old school, it's disrespectful. Um, people my age cannot afford to buy a house. Um, there are not enough houses. Um, most of my friends, I, I think I'm the only one I know in my friend group that owns a house because I, I have two degrees and an amazing job, and I can barely afford my mortgage. I had two roommates, I had one roommate to cover the mortgage. Um, I think, I think renting is just fine. I think saying that people that rent are not invested in our community is crazy. Um, so I just want to put that out there. Young people need somewhere to live. Um, and 90% of that is going to be renting. I think co-living sounds lovely. Um, that's why, I mean, we're going through all these regulations to put, to put systems in place so that it is not a free-for-all. Um, it will not be a free-for-all. I think Commissioner Johnson, what you were referring to when you were saying this is already happy, happening in, um, single-family home areas, sounds like a roommate situation, like the owner is living there, which is different from...
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
A co-living situation. Um, so in general, I think we need to shift our mindset a little bit, um, and be more welcoming of, uh, diverse housing needs. Um, so I'm excited, but I understand the parking situation can get tricky and regulations need to be in place, certainly. Um, so that's all I have to add. Are we on 7B or 6B yet? I have a couple notes there, but I...
Not...
Yep, we're on 7A.
7A still.
Okay.
We're still on co-living.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Continuing on with the round robin. Commissioner Sweat, I know we went out there, but did you have anything else?
Um, actually, uh, as far as the parking goes, we already have parking standards.
So, um, where does it go? There is, can't require private...
If I remember correctly from last meeting, we were going to interpret a major transit stop as like a transit center or something major, and not as every single bus stop, which we don't have any transit centers in our city.
Yeah, so the major transit stop does not apply to Milton at this time.
Okay.
Um, we will, when we, we are going to go through all the parking standards later this year, we will have to put it that it's .25 spaces per sleeping unit for these, um, but we would do that at that time. We have to do that by the end of the year.
Okay, and, and again, uh, this co-living issue is from the ground up, it's not existing homes and buildings, right?
If, I mean, if an existing house was in a multifamily zone, they could convert it. But they would have to tell us they're converting it, and we'd have to go through and make certain, make sure that they meet criteria. But, um...
And, and that's only pertaining to, uh, the structure, right? We're not talking about putting, uh, little houses outside.
Not for this, no.
Okay. Because anytime you have little houses.
They're great.
And they're sharing.
Yeah, this would be, one, that would be one building, however it is, with their, yeah. It, it's not like I live in here and I have to walk outside to get to it, no.
Right, okay.
All right, okay. Commissioner Oler.
So it seems to me that this is simply another kind of multifamily housing situation allowed in existing multifamily-zoned areas.
Okay.
Though the parking is different. That's, it's a state mandate, and that's pretty much it. It's not changing single-family residential, it's not changing anything else, it's just changing the kind of multifamily you can have to include this dorm-like situation. That's right.
Yeah.
All right, that's it, that's all.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
I think it, it is a good idea. I'm not opposed to them. I'm opposed if hedge pun, funds are doing it, because it doesn't mean the rent will be affordable, because they often don't look at that. We don't know who the builders will be, and in our economy now, and the way things are going, they actually don't look to the benefit of the renter. And so I don't know if there's a way, and we can't, obviously, we can't, whatever's in the law, but it is hard, um, for young people or single mothers and stuff to, in our area. We never thought it would get this expensive in this area. But that's why I want us to go out of the urban growth area, but that will never happen, that's a dream. But I just want to make sure that, that there's some type of, um, oversight with the owners. And I guess we don't do it with multifamily, so that's no different.
And that's a thing. That's a bigger question, problem.
Yeah.
Than this one little thing.
And that's my negative feeling about, uh, corporate ownership of stuff, because the people always get the raw end of the deal.
Yeah, and that, but like you said, that happens to regular houses, that happens to...
Um, continuing just the second round of round robin, as far as Commissioner Boyle, did you have any further comments or discussion? All right, Commissioner Zaro.
Nope.
Uh, Commissioner Sweat?
Nope.
Commissioner Oler.
Yeah, so this is just an allowable use, right? There's no mandate attached to it, like, the owner and developer of the property could decide to use this or not use this as they chose, correct?
Correct. It is, again, it's just adding the definition and adding it to the use table as a permitted use if someone wanted to construct it.
Yeah, so it's unclear to me that anything's going to change, it's just going to be allowed.
And I don't know how much Milton would be a high place for it. I think you're going to see it a lot more near colleges and stuff, but it is an option.
All right. All right.
One quick, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is there a way, and maybe I'm seeing, I, I have a negative view on some things in law, that there would be no misuse, that it would be long-term rentals and not any short-term rentals? Is there a way to protect that for the people that are trying to get a co-living space in our area?
So, I think it is, I think, we're gonna, we are going to deal with short-term rentals later this year. It might be worth putting it in there. Um, I think that might be the more appropriate place.
I think it's important to look at.
Yeah, for those kind of things.
Yes, yeah.
Because that, again, maybe it's worth looking at it for all multifamily, you know, should we, should apartments be, I don't, you know, I don't know if they are, but that might be something more for that conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think one of the continuing trends that I see is, yeah, how do we provide incentives for local business owners or homeowners and keeping that generational stuff versus bringing investors into the community or, um, so figuring out the right incentives for those, and then figuring out short-term versus long-term rentals, and what kind of demographics come in with that. Um, as I mentioned last meeting, you know, it's one of those, when I think of it in my mindset at 40-something, I'm like, oh my gosh, who would ever, but, um, when I look at these things, I really think of, how can I make it affordable for my son to move back to the area? Uh, because if I can't find that, uh, then he's stuck living with me, or he's stuck living somewhere, you know, out in the middle of nowhere. So it's, how do I, how do I set my own children up for success long-term, is when I think of this. And I think, eh, maybe something like this might make sense for a 20-something that just needs, you know, just enough to DoorDash in and, and eat and run and, and, you know, just work, school, whatever it is that they need to do.
Chair, may I make a motion on it?
Yes.
You ready, everybody?
All right.
Get your head, who's second. Um, I, I move to recommend to the city council the proposed zoning code amendments related to co-living buildings.
So seconded.
All right. So we have a motion to recommend to the city council the proposed zoning code amendments related to co-living buildings that has been seconded. All those, um, any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Boyle.
Uh, when do we go over, uh, the parking requirements for this? Are we just going with the .25 spaces within a half mile of a major transit stop?
So what you're recommending today is just what's on draft, the attachment one.
Page seven.
It's just the change to the def, adding of the definition and adding to the table of uses. We will, we don't have to have the parking, I believe, until the end of the year, so I figured it made more sense since we're going to be looking at the parking to add that section. So at this point, there...
Just page seven.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion before vote? All right, so all those in favor to recommend to the city council the proposed zoning code amendments related to co-living buildings, say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, right, motion passes unanimous. Motion by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Oler.
And I wrote it down somewhere, but it's not on my agenda. Thank you.
All right, um, moving on to 7B, which is unit lot subdivisions and binding site plans. And we'll turn it back over to staff to introduce the subject again.
So for those who want to encourage homeownership, this is the code for you. So the goal for this is to increase the supply and affordability of homeownership opportunities. Um, so as I was previously stating, and again, some of you were unfortunately not able to make last month, so we'll try to go over a couple of, um, it, I did not, theoretically, if someone wanted to make, you know, if you all like, yeah, this is great, and you want to make a motion today, great, but the assumption was that we would have a discussion today, have the public hearing, and probably come back in, um, April for the actual action. So again, there's, trying to wrap you around, so if you look on page 13, and kind of compare 11 and 13, I tried to sort of break this down a little bit. So the idea of a unit lot subdivision is, um, and Spokane actually started this, I think, six, seven years ago, and they've had some real good success. So the idea is that you would take your lot, and so I tried to have a couple of different versions here. And so let's say you have your primary house and you build two ADUs on it. The idea of a unit lot subdivision is that you could, through a, um, it's similar to a short plat process, but instead of having individual parcels when you're done, you basically have baby parcels and a parent parcel. So if you take the one on the top right, um, you have a single-family home, you have two ADUs in the back, you would go through the process of, with the city, and you would submit your survey and your documents that show this is the lot, this is where we're doing baby parcel one, baby parcel two, baby parcel three. Everything in green is going to be a shared common area, so maybe that's the driveways. Um, obviously, that's, you know, you want to make sure all the paths for all the unit, um, utilities are there, and then it gets, um, the process, again, if you're looking at 11, I sort of tried to, to kind of compare it to our short plat, which people are more familiar with, and a full subdivision. This one's very similar to the short plat. It's a type three, which means notices are going out to 500 feet, so people kind of know what's aware. Um, once those documents are, we, they come into us, we review them, we make sure they meet all the codes, we have our engineers look at them, make sure they meet all of those requirements for how you do those official documents. Um, it gets recorded with the county, both the actual plat, the mini plat that shows, um, It gets recorded with the county, both the actual plat, the mini plat that shows where everything is, or technically, it's, I guess, more of a site plan, and any agreement. So there's a, you know, they could have a mini homeowners association, it could just be on every single one, so that it goes with the title that they have shared land and they have to help pitch in to keep it updated. So if you're looking at 11, I tried to compare. So unit lot subdivision, you have a parent lot. So again, if you're looking at the diagram, everything within the outer boundary meets our current setbacks for a house in a single-family zone. So it would be 20 in the front, 25 to the house in the back, seven and a half on the sides, can't be more than 40% structure coverage. So those three units combined still have to make, meet the same requirements that we would for, if it was one house. So you're going to get smaller houses than, because you're putting more on there, and then they are recorded as one unit. It's only allowed, this process is only allowed for like, single-family duplex ADUs that are all on the same level. So you're basically looking at it in our NR1, NR2, multifamily potentially, and then maybe mixed uses if they were doing like what they did behind the post office. So that's, but again, it would have, to use this, the unit lot subdivision, have to be very small. So in most cases, they're going to probably use the binding site plan. Utilities, they would have to have separate utilities. And again, yes, there'd be easements and agreements to make sure everything works. So I guess I can stop there on unit lot subdivision and see if there's questions and comments on that one before we go to the others.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll start with you, Commissioner Swett.
You just redefined ADUs. I'm sorry.
Oh. No, I was saying, I was going to go you first and then Commissioner Oler next.
You just redefined ADUs. We hashed over ADUs forever. And ADUs are supposed to be powered by the, by the house. Utilities all come from the main structure. Power, water, electrical, you know, everything.
So the way that it was adopted was it was up to the utility company to determine whether or not they had to be joint meter or separate meter? Because, and then, so the idea is if you're going to divide them into separate units, you would want them to each have their own meter.
Absolutely. The size of these ADUs that are behind a structure, are they going to be size enough to handle a kitchen, utilities, I mean, like a washer? That's required in a home, period. That's National Electric Code. There's a lot of requirements. And I can't see you're going to have the space in an ADU to have all of that.
ADUs can be up to 1,000 square feet, again, if they, if they all fit.
If they'll fit.
So, and that's where it's up to the developer, to whoever's the property owner, to decide how they want to allocate their amount of space. Do they want all in one building? Do they want three smaller buildings? How do they want to do that? But again, this is, what's before us is the process to allow them to be independently sold.
Yeah, I don't know about this. I don't like it.
Commissioner Oler?
So my understanding is this is optional for somebody creating ADUs on their property. They can still do the traditional ADU. It's all owned by the owner. But they have this option to do a unit lot subdivision for up to three lots. And then, like, my understanding is the parent lot isn't lot one. It's not owned by the, that becomes co-owned by all, like a condominium? So there, have, to have like a mini homeowners association attached to all of these? Is that right?
So they could either have a mini homeowners association, or it could be like, because there's some properties that have like a shared driveway. So every legal description, there's an easement attached to each one that says they have responsibility to take care of. And it would be on the, whatever, the recorded document would say that all of them share ownership and they all have shared responsibilities to maintain it.
Should we have a requirement for them to follow the RCW for homeowners agreements if they're going to enter into such an arrangement with a unit lot subdivision, just to make sure that that's all above board and not? I think...
The way it's, I know the template was that they could either do like a homeowners or they could put it on the, like I said, put it kind of as an agreement and on the plat and tied to the individual lots.
Is that sufficient? I mean, what if you have, what if there's some kind of, what I'm getting at is what if this, right, this gives rise to some kind of inter-unit dispute? There's no clear guide or pass in it unless we already use the RCW for it. Maybe we should. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I can look at how that's written and see if that applies to this or if, do you have the RCW there?
It's Title 64, Chapter 38.
Okay. I will see if that's, makes sense. It very well might make sense to reference that or how it's written on that. Again, it... It's the same, yes, there's always the potential for the same problems here as, like I said, there are places that have shared private drives. And if one chooses not to, then it becomes a civil issue of who's taking care of it and who's paying for it and stuff. And so there's always challenges or, you know, we have a lot of shared stormwater that either is homeowners association or if it's just a couple lots, there's a covenant agreement, I guess is the better word for it. So, but yeah, I will look and see if we can reference something a little bit better.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Johnson?
This is not state mandated yet, but it's coming.
This one is state mandated.
This one as well.
This one's already in effect. We just don't have rules for it.
Okay. All right. Just so everybody knows. Don't do these freely, because it's big changes that are pounding us. Would it, would the state disallow a requirement of an HOA? I think that's the best type of protection.
And I think that's kind of what Commissioner Oler is also looking at. So let me double-check how, and we can definitely beef up the language of how, if that...
But can a city mandate that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Because I think it, like I said, I think the pamphlet talked about, like, it could be just on each one of, like, if, you know, if you're just talking about a couple, it could be just listed that there's shared ownership. So let me, I'll do some research on this that specifically and come back next month.
But shared ownership is really strange in that respect. And the other question is, so the big house, the owner, subdivided plats, builds the two units, sells those to somebody. And so we don't know how it's going to be declared with the shared space. They're individual homes, people act differently in each of the homes. But the number one person who originally did it moves, he can sell his house or her house, the other two can sell his or her or their house at any time, at any place, to anyone.
You can sell them. That's the whole point, that they would, basically, it'd be similar to condos.
Right.
That each one gets its own kind of sub parcel number. But even if the original person is living in the main house, when they file that document and we approve it, we sign it, we record it, they record it, it will dictate, these are the, you know, the county will assign them sub-things and these are the shared chunks.
And see, I really want to push for HOAs. I think it's the best way, protection for the city and for the owners of the property as well, because we see it in the townhouses, you know, over in the other part of the city. And I understand shared driveways, but they're not sharing the whole lot. So I really have, I don't have a problem with it. I know we have to do this. But I think HOAs, they're all putting in for the responsibility of the main. Somebody might say, well, yeah, it says, it's a legal description, but it's not saying, no, you have to pay for some of this. And that's what an HOA does. So if it's like a condo, by legal things, to me, it should have an HOA. And that, that's all I'm saying on this.
I will definitely check, do some more research on what requirements we can put on the shared ownership part.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Were you done?
For now.
I didn't interrupt her.
Happened before.
Oh.
Here we go. Okay, just a few questions. This one's kind of been answered, but can unit lots be created after the completion of the development? So say the development's all done, and who's ever decided to do the unit lots is done, can someone come in later and create unit lots within that development as long as it's within this nine lot limit?
So also, so again, going back to my page 11, I didn't point out a couple of the things. So the density is, so this leads into your question, or it adds to your question, is that the density, this doesn't allow you to get around our requirements of density or how many units. So let's say on, you know, on our attachment down here on the bottom one where there's only two units. So yes, someone could unit lot subdivide that with two units. And then somebody, then theoretically, they could amend that and add a third unit, because we do allow three units. But somebody couldn't have three units and then somehow try to get a fourth unit, because we don't allow four units. So within what's allowed. Now, the unit, the nine would only be if, at this point for us, that would probably only be if it was, like it says, if it was like a multifamily and they had a bunch of little houses, but they'd have to be full houses. Or like I said, for, if like behind, actually, there wouldn't have to be tiny houses at all. If behind, like I said, looking at behind the post office, it, the idea of a nine, they could do, if it's multifamily, they could, if they just had done nine units instead of the 20, 30 that they did, it would allow them to use the unit lot subdivision process versus the binding site plan process. But the only way you're going to go up to nine, anything over three at this point, is if you're in multifamily. Those are not, you know, because we only allow three in residential.
And so, dumb question again.
Not dumb.
Nine units, nine units is not for one development, it's for one lot.
If the lot can support it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And I guess, depending on how you wanted to decide, I mean, it could be considered a development, but it's a development on...
Because really, this, this would not comply, because there's more than nine lots in your diagram.
Right, so each one of these, so each one of these is an individual, again, just showing, it's never going to happen.
Five, six.
I didn't imagine that you would ever have this, but I just wanted to, we had talked about that the pictures last month were not very accurate to our setbacks, to our size restrictions. So yes, if somebody, the only time you're going to go up to nine is if you're, like I said, it would be, you're in a multifamily zone, so our density allows it, and it's on a big enough lot that they could then have shared, like I said, basically that would be what's back behind there, but it would be nine instead of the 34. What they used to do the 34 was the binding site plan. So we do already allow that. This would just allow it to be a slightly easier process if there was less number.
Okay. I get it with the water, electric, and gas meters, each one has its own. What about lot coverage and impervious stormwater fees? Because you're creating more impervious surface and lot coverage, would it, would that stump somebody from being able to build on that, two, like three on one lot? Or is it, or is it just, they just raise the stormwater fees because they're covering more square footage?
So if it's in the single-family zone, so if it's an NR1 and NR2, our code says that their impervious surface is limited to 50%. So whether they put one unit on it or three units on it, they can't do more than 50% of impervious surface. So that, and that includes the structures, they're limited to 40% for structures, so that's all three can't cover more than 40. And the structures plus driveways, patios, whatever, can't be more than 50%. Under our stormwater thing, there is, if they get above 40, there is an extra fee for stormwater. But they, we wouldn't allow them to go up a 50%, no matter what they put on it.
Yeah.
In the residential zones.
There's stages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so commercial, then multifamily, they're allowed to do more.
I'm at 41%.
41%? So you pay the higher rate?
And I made them prove it to me, too. Okay, what about impact fees, parks, roads, and schools on each individual unit lot? Will they be paying a...
So we, under our ADUs, under our current ADU regulations, the, so the primary house or if it was a duplex, they pay the full amount. Any ADU pays 50%, whether it's a rental or you could sell it.
Okay. We're getting right through these.
So, can I interject real quick?
Sure.
While it's still on my mind. So, no, I lost my, never mind, go ahead. I'll figure it out.
On circle again. Writing down.
Another question, I don't want to get too involved with it, is you have a two-story home, the parent lot, it's a two-story home. So would you be allowed, your ADUs, to have a garage underneath and a apartment upstairs?
Our ADUs are limited to 24 feet, so if they theoretically could do that.
So it kicks back to the ADU code? Okay.
Now, they can't, let's say you had a house and you decided to turn the basement into an ADU, you cannot use the unit lot subdivision, because it's all in one footprint.
Right.
So those stay...
And I think I have...
Non-sellable.
Well, design standards question about the ADUs, it would go back to the ADU code?
And they, yeah, it'd go back, and the ADU code does say that it should be similar in nature to the house. So it should be somewhat, you know...
Okay, now I'll look at it from an investor's point of view, which is how I would look at it, is what if someone develops a home and two unit lots and rents out all three? Doesn't that defeat the purpose of the homeownership and affordability?
You're still, I mean, you're still creating, so if they're going to rent them, they're not going to go through the unit lot subdivision process, because you can have a house with two ADUs and rent them all out.
Gotcha.
So if you go through the unit lot subdivision, I think the only reason you're doing that is because you want to sell them. There's no advantage...
Right.
To rent them if you're, you're actually better off renting them the other way.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Commissioner Zaro?
Just a couple of small things on the HOA. I think we'll talk about it next time, but is there a way to cap the fee that they could charge?
Probably not through this process.
Okay. It just seems like we're adding a barrier to entry to...
Well, yeah, they're going to have to have joint anyway, so usually they set whatever they think that needs to be to pay for whatever, so there could be, I mean, I strangely live in a neighborhood where it's $10 a year. I'm not really sure what that helps with. But, you know, you would assume they would be like, hey, we're going to pay for lawn care and we need to put some away for, you would hope that they would just figure it out on their own.
Okay. Um, page 15, under the definition, subdivision, say is re-division of land into five or more lots. On our attachment one table, there's short and full. And the max allowed under short is five, so I'm wondering if we need to break the definition up into full and short.
Sorry, what page are you on?
So if you're looking at page 15, the definition of subdivision, and you're looking at the table on page 11.
So on page, yeah, so on page 15, it shows the, there's, there's already a short subdivision definition.
There is?
There is. So I could, I should have probably added that. I was just only adding the ones that I was changing. So I apologize for that. There is a short subdivision definition that does the five... There is a short subdivision, um, definition that does the five and under. Um, what I was doing was separating out, we had subdivision or plat, really, those are two different things. Plat's more the map, subdivision's more the process. So that was the reason that was included is I was just.
Okay.
Including a plat. And then the blue highlighted is the things that I changed based on the last meeting. Um, so we did add, um, I just did multifamily uses because that made, it sort of hung there. Um, made a point that the unit lot subdivision is limited to single-family middle housing and ADUs. Um, on 16, um, made a point that each, if you're, because we're selling them, that each unit would have to be served by a separate utility meeting. Again, if you don't subdivide, you may not have to. And then, so again, the first section is the unit lot subdivision. We do have to have a process, we don't have one, that's what we're working on. The second half is the binding site plan, which in essence is the same idea, but it's used for bigger multifamily projects. It's used for commercial properties, it's used for malls. And so, um, I would, it felt like they're so tied together that, and they're very similar in nature. So I've taken our existing code at 1630, and obviously you can tell I've sort of redlined and tried to make it consistent, um, and address the issues that were brought up, so.
Um, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So I think my first round of comments, um, I've just been focusing on just the table and the graphics. I haven't really gotten too much into the definitions, so maybe our second round robin will just be a little bit of, if there's any questions or clarifications on definitions. So the way I'm understanding it is if I were looking at example on page 13 and starting at the top left, let's say one and two were originally one plot. And then got subdivided, and it's been five years or whatever the thing is, then lot one and lot two could potentially add children lots.
No, so, sorry, this one was harder to like.
Graphically show.
Graphically show. So the idea of the, the top one is that that's a duplex.
Okay.
So you're still, basically, one and two are going to be child lots.
Okay.
So you could basically, in essence, not have any shared land in this case because you've made one and you've made two.
Okay.
But they would still file, so they wouldn't be able to, I mean, I guess one of, one of them could put a ADU on, I suppose, but it's very unlikely.
Okay.
So the idea being here is you would, you would allow ownership for each side, but it would still be recorded as this is one unit and you can't chop it up, you're not, you, yeah.
Okay, so, um, the next one down, so that green is basically all of their shared space. And I think that's what we're kinda talking about, that maybe we need to have some sort of HOA or some sort of RCW reference. Because, let's say.
Yeah, it says that they have to somehow have joint ownership, but I'll look into what our options are.
Okay, cuz yeah, it's a little bit of like, number three has kids and they wanna start putting a big toy out there. Number two's like, hey, that's mine, or you know, why are you chopping down my rose bush or whatever else? So yeah, I do think that there should be, um, either that or number three sells and move, someone else moves in and one and two go, oh, he, he always took care of the lawn, I don't know. Um, so yeah, just definitely, I think there should be something that says what the agreement is as far as whether they pool resources or expand their, their plots to where they're, they're all, um, owning their own.
So yeah, I just tried to show up, these are all just.
Yeah.
The idea that they could be designed many, many different ways.
Yeah.
You could like, the bottom one that's kind of at the, in the bottom middle, you know, that would technically be, if they were too attached, you could share all of it.
Yeah.
Or they could divide it out, so.
Okay.
It's sort of up to whoever decides to do that, how they wanna divide it up, so.
Yeah, and then with all these mini examples, we're showing like, they can't really get split into nine. But if you were to take basically all of these on the right-hand side and say that that was one parcel, that is a way that they could have put nine.
If they were, yeah.
If this was all one parcel and you ignore these.
If you were in a multifamily zone.
Mm-hmm.
And this was one big parcel, then theoretically you could do some sort of, but it probably wouldn't look like that.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, it was just kinda helping me understand all of the different things and options and concerns others are bringing up. So with that, we'll continue the, the round robin as far as any questions more on the tables or if we wanna start getting into definitions.
Uh, I did have a question, and you mentioned something about taxes, didn't you?
Uh, impact fees.
Impact fees.
Oh, impact fees?
Yeah, but it's covered under the ADU code already, so they get half off.
So only the primary house has to pay that?
No, they, uh, when you.
I caught.
When you develop the ADUs, you would have to pay the equivalent of half the impact fees for, um, streets, parks, and schools. Is what the, uh, I think that was what the final adoption was by city council. So you pay the full amount for the first house, and then if you do an ADU, you have to pay 50% of that for that ADU. And those, they pay at the time of issuance of permit.
Okay, I, I just still think it's a can of worms. You're gonna, you're gonna love it later.
Um, continuing on, anything as far as definitions or anything that you'd like to get into there?
Yeah, um, so my understanding is the binding site plan would be for basically more like a traditional condo. It could be all one large building and then separate.
So binding site plan still comes, so binding site plan is usually where it's the unit and the ground below it. So if you had an apartment complex that you were turning into condos, um, basically you're relying on the state law on how they regulate how to condominiumize. With the binding site plan, so basically when they're turning apartments into condos, they don't come to us at all. What this would be is if you are, um, again, making sort of those child lots, so you're, you have the one big parcel, and then everyone has their own little building and the land below it. Now, it might be a little bit of land, it might be a lot of land, and then there's also, but then you're sharing driveways and you're sharing parks and stuff. So it's, you know, the option is you don't have to, those can be less than your minimum. So if you were doing a traditional, uh, subdivision for single houses, everyone has to be 8,000 square feet. If you're in the multifamily zone, you could have, let's say you have.
This is the mini cottages on a large scale.
What? Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And except traditionally, binding site plans were used a lot more for, like I said, um, now, and I don't think there is one, but like, if you look at the Safeway complex, they have shared parking lots, they have shared stormwater. Um, so if you ever looked, they actually have different parcels. Safeway owns their parcel, and then even though they're all connected, different ones own different parts. If they had, if they were to do that today, we would say, okay, you also have to, you have to go through the binding site plan, which makes us say you have for sure agreements that you're all sharing and who's doing all of this. So this has, because apartments in some ways, under the building code, are sort of considered non, they're more commercial, like it's a little gray when you're dealing with multifamily at, once you get past two. Um, this has been more and more common, a lot more cities, and we have done it at least once, if not twice. So that way they could have little tiny lots with their houses.
Okay.
And you can get, you know, and meet the density of that, whatever our zone is. So again, I think it's, what is it, 12, I think for multifamily, it's not, it's not a lot, relatively speaking.
Okay.
Compared to Tacoma where I live.
Continue around the room, any question, well, anything else?
Uh, one more thing, page 18, 1630, 015, applicability. The provisions of this chapter shall apply to parcels that are developed or plan to be developed with commercial, industrial, or multifamily uses. So how do you get residential ADUs in a commercial zone?
So that's the binding site plan one, so you're not gonna do ADUs.
Oh.
This would be for.
Big structure, yeah, yeah, all right, thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, Commissioner Zaro.
I'm good.
Okay, so with that, we've, we've gone around the room a couple of times. Anything else as far as closing discussion or next steps?
I will do some research on, well, if we can add some language on how the covenant HOA something is done to kinda lock that up a little better.
Okay.
Um, but I think that's the only thing I'm hearing at this point. Um, okay.
All right, so it sounds like only homework is just looking into how that shared space gets managed or recorded as managed. Okay, perfect.
Um, so then the last item, I didn't, I just, I probably confused people because there wasn't really a agenda summary cover sheet. Um, I just, um, I didn't know, because there was some talk of that, did we want to talk about the survey ideas to kinda bounce ideas off, or are you guys okay just, my original thought was you'd give me ideas that would, or give me what's important to you so I know what to focus on and then I'll start bringing back information. But there was some discussion last meeting of being able to maybe, um, discuss each one of those a little bit of what is important, so it's sort of open if, if we want to have a discussion on what people think is important or what they wanna tell me to look at, or if you're okay with just, the surveys came to me and I will, um, I'll probably bring parking back first because I think that's one we definitely need to fix.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as I, and then we can start working on, or I might bring a couple back depending on how. April's gonna be a little tight because I'm going on vacation, but, um.
Could we, could you pass out mine to people?
Um, I did not, oh, I didn't pass it on directly, but I can, if everyone, I was just sort of summarizing.
I wanna read it.
You do or you don't? Um, no, I did say that, didn't I, and then I changed my mind where I was just, um, sort of summarizing. I do have a sheet that I was just gonna summarize what everybody said. Um, I have two council members back, they, at the, after the meeting on Monday, a couple of them said, oh, you gave us a survey, didn't you? I said, yes, I did, so I may still get a few more in from council members. And then my thinking was I was just sort of gonna, I can kind of just summarize what people sort of highlighted and then send that out, and then I will use that to start getting a better feel of what to bring back. Again, these are not state mandates, other than a few things in the parking, but most of them we've dealt with. These are more, what is the vision that you guys and the council have for the city and our community has that we can address and fine-tune, so it frees everybody up a little bit.
All right, well, I mean, we still have like 30 minutes on the clock, so if we wanna just.
Save it.
Save it?
For later.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotten almost.
I'll find, I'll find you.
Yeah. Again, my, that was my thinking is just, tell me what you guys think is important, I'm looking for themes, and then I'll know what to bring back, and then we'll have a full conversation on parking, and then we'll have a full conversation on various landscaping and, you know, so I'm okay with that.
I have a vision of Leavenworth.
We're not.
Bring the tourist.
Gonna open up a cuckoo clock store, I'm sure.
Talk about VRVO and short-term rentals.
I'd do that, yodeling.
All right, so it sounds like you're gonna continue to collect topics of the survey. If you haven't turned in your survey, um, please get that in.
Yeah, give me your survey, or if you'd rather have a phone conversation, just call me and I will dictate.
Can you email that out?
I did, but I will send it, I resent it on Monday or Tuesday, so double-check if you have it. Or I can get you a hard copy, I'm.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look on my email first, if, if not, then I'll come and get one.
Okay.
Yeah, she's a busy lady, I went in the office yesterday and they were like, uh, she's in a meeting. I go, with who? I go, you know who I am?
That's what I was in with the council members.
Lady goes, no, I don't know who you, I don't know who you are. I, all right, I'll get a hold of her later.
You must not go in often enough, they're like, hey.
Oh, no. Just the police station, they're all, Tom, hey, where you been?
Oh, good.
Hey, don't we all have to sign a thing too? We have to sign our volunteer agreement?
Yeah.
So is it time for me to do my?
Yep, staff, so yeah, I think we're moving on to eight, staff reports.
Um, a couple of quick things. One, um, as of this afternoon, the new code is finally on Code Publishing website.
Oh.
So it looks very pretty with all the colors. Um, it was a little stressful because I'd have people call and say it says this, and I'm like, it doesn't, I know it says that, but it doesn't count anymore, so that's nice. Um, secondly, yes, I have, so hopefully if you read receipt of volunteer handbook, she emailed that to, to people. If you didn't get it emailed and you wanna paper copy, I can, and then.
Who is she?
Uh, Nikki, I believe Nikki did, or Trisha did.
Trisha.
Trisha did.
Was that recently?
Yeah, the other day.
Last.
Um, so many of you were probably good and turned, signed this like six months ago. There's a volunteer handbook that went out, and if you signed it and turned it in, you weren't on her naughty list.
Oh.
Some of us were on the naughty list and were told, hey, you need to sign the sheet and get it in.
Problem, just do it. Just sign it that way you got it.
How many volunteer forms do I have to sign? How many background checks do I have to go through?
Is that what mine? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, like three background checks.
And then I just was like, I'm not gonna remember, can you have Angelie print some extras and I'll sign it? So that's why that's here.
Are there extras? Cuz I'll sign it, it's a pain to do it over email, I'm like, I can't put in my signature.
When's the last time you signed one, just sign one and I'll give it to her.
Yeah, and then you're good for a year.
Last is, so talking about the new code, um, I think there, I'm putting this on the record. I think we, I, I inadvertently checked the wrong box for drive-throughs. Um, currently, the code that got adopted doesn't allow drive-throughs along Meridian in the Uptown District where we have all the drive-throughs. Um, basically all along Meridian where Safeway and all of those are. So the best I can figure out is it, we didn't, we weren't, the proposal was to not allow them in the town center, but to allow them in Uptown. And somehow, when I was transferring to new versions, it got flip-flopped.
So do we need to do something formal?
So I would really like to fix that, if everyone's okay with that because we actually have a couple of really cool projects, that's why I figured out that I screwed up.
Do we have to make a motion for you?
No, so I will just, at the next, in April, we will do it, we'll do the public hearing, and I'd love to just do the public hearing and the action to just, it'll just be, add this one thing, allowed use to it. Then I can take it to council right after that and hopefully we can get it fixed in two months.
Yeah.
Yep. So if you're all okay with that.
Yeah.
I figured you would, but I wanted to give you a warning that that's the only really bad thing I have found so far that I went, oh, shoot. Um, it's, it's just was.
Bad timing.
It was a little disturbing when I looked at it and went, oh, this is not good. So, um, and then like you said, we will, as we find, as we go through parking, and if we find things throughout the year, I will, will, we can definitely do some, um, any other fixes. There's little stuff that like Code Publishing found, but they could fix those without having to go through the whole process. They, that we can't fix without going through, so, okay, I will bring that back, thank you very, very much. And off the record, we have some cool projects coming.
Well, good. All right, so with that, we'll go to commissioner reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Johnson.
Um, the only thing I'm gonna share is when we talk about ADUs, and I think I've mentioned it before, there is a beautiful on, uh, 12th or 13th on Xavier. The family built a ADU that coordinates with the main house, and it is the best construction and look in our neighborhood over by Xavier. Um, for an example of what can really look good in an ADU. They did a, a 10-plus job, and I haven't seen too many other places that are as good as this one.
Right, Commissioner Byle. Commissioner Zaro.
Nothing.
I don't think I have anything either. Commissioner Sweat? Commissioner Ollie? All right, well, um, they're no longer here, but I just wanna say thank you for having public comments. I, it's always welcome and exciting to have. Uh, next meeting is April 9th, and with that, it's.